I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner's absent and excused. Commissioner Kulyas?
Here.
And Commissioner Kuliannis?
Here.
Thank you. This evening's invocation will be given by Pastor G. Thompson of Life Christian Church. If we can remain standing and turn and pledge allegiance to the flag afterwards, that would be great. Thank you.
Let us pray. O gracious God, our Father, we come first and foremost to say thank you for allowing us to see this day. We ask that you intervene into this meeting, that you pour your spirit. We thank you for your protection, for the wisdom that you have bestowed upon this city, the leaders. We ask now that you guide and direct them according to your will and your way. Bless the people and the citizens of this great city. May we continue to live in peace, love, and harmony. It is this hope that in this meeting, we would advance the greater good for all mankind. We pray this prayer in unity, as we all simply say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get to public comments, there's a couple of announcements. First, I want to let everybody know this is the last meeting, commission meeting for the year, and our next one will be January ninth, right after Epiphany. So it'll be pretty much one month off before we have our next meeting. Also, this evening, we have Mr. Salsman, our litigation attorney, sitting in for Mrs. Kardashian, our general counsel, and also, all the way down to my right, is Sergeant Crawford, sitting in for Police Chief Jeff Young. We have one addenda item this evening, and that's the approval of the Building Department Audit. I think that's the way it's written, and that was added at the request of Commissioner Kuliannis and Ms. Kardashian, after they had a conversation with Mr. Pullos, and he's made some changes to his audit plan, so we'll discuss that this evening. Also, I do have one, actually, important announcement. We lost a very important employee, a longtime employee this past week, Ms. Sherry Jacobs. She'd been ill for some times, and I was asked to announce that fact. She's a longtime employee. In fact, she was here when I was city manager, and she was responsible for all of our special events processing, and just a wonderful person, beautiful smile, always got along with everybody, and probably an ideal employee, because there's very little overhead associated with her. So I'm very sorry for the loss. It's a loss to her family, and certainly a loss to all of our family here at the City of Tarpon Springs government. City Manager, I'm going to ask, would you like to say anything?
Just again, I want to repeat what you said, longtime employee for Public Works, everything from scheduling, special events, getting things done. Not only losing the person, but as an organization, the institutional loss. She loved the city, she loved working for the city. When she was sick, she tried to work from the city's home as much as possible when she didn't have to. We encouraged her to rest and recover and go through your trials and tribulations, but she would still try to do what she could. So it was an employee that loved the city. She was part of our family here a long time. Both Mayor and I go way back, and she was here a long time, and it was a great loss to us, and prayers to her family and all of her friends who are going to miss her tremendously.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments this evening from anyone in attendance? Okay. Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Robowski, one-six-zero-two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three-four-six-eight-nine. I will adjust my comments I had intended to speak. It will now be altered because specifically, the final item, the addendum on the agenda today. So speaking just generally, I find it interesting that oftentimes, there is talk about how mindful you must be about lawsuits. Lawsuits from ex-employees, ex-attorneys, lawsuits from developers, and developers' attorneys. And then I find it extremely puzzling when the concerned citizens threaten a lawsuit. It's as if they didn't even say a word. No mind is given at all when the citizens speak out. And they weren't threatening a lawsuit, they were actually going to file it, and did file it, as well as others. And those lawsuits were righteous to point out that the city didn't follow its own rules or the laws. Now, it's like, let them eat cake when we say we're going to sue, right? But anybody else, boy, you guys, you sure backed up quick. And then there's talk of settlements. What's all that about? What, I mean, what is that about? Those lawsuits, you should welcome those, suits by ex-employees, and so on, because then maybe you get subpoena power and get some people on the witness stand to explain all of this stuff that's been going on. So don't be so scared of those lawsuits, to proceed and do things the right way. And as far as Mr. Coulson's lawsuit, who is now championed by Teresa Rubicaba, that continues no matter what you're being told. The deadline you're looking at is the wrong one. There are other things that could be done, and they are going to be done. She will be filing them shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Delakis, I'm sure you have something to say.
And we do not have any other raised hands, send it in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jumper. No other raised hands? No other raised?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Delakis, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate being able to get here in time. Sometimes trying to cross alternate nineteen to turn left, turn right is a little tricky. My passage for tonight is from Isaiah forty, three through five. "A voice of one calling in the desert, prepare the way for the Lord. Make straight in the wilderness a highway for our God. Every valley shall be raised up, every mountain and hill made low. The rough ground shall become level, the rugged places a plain. And the glory of the Lord will be revealed, and all mankind together will see it, for the mouth of the Lord has spoken." So a couple of things that I wanted to bring up again. Being reminded, and I don't know if y'all have had a chance to go to the Connect Tarpon Ankle Park site to look at the study I referenced, which looked at maritime and tourism as an economic driver and the impacts. This was done in two thousand sixteen. That's one of the things about cities, sometimes we do studies, they sit on a shelf, and then you guys come along and you try to reinvent the wheel. But I appreciate the comments that were made last meeting about support for doing what we can to not allow that development on the Ankle Park property in Pasco. And I appreciate all the efforts that staff has done to provide information to the public. In regards to that, I want to bring back the fact about our Maritime Committee. As far as I know, and I guess we can maybe do a search online or something about whether it actually expired, but from my understanding, it never did. So I think now would be the time to get some of those people involved, now that the dredging is about done. And as I mentioned, there are grants available. Talk to a lady on the Art Committee. She knows some people through the USDA, and there are grants available to hopefully maybe sponsor people to bring their boats in and give them support and revitalize not only the sponging industry, but also the marine repair industry. You know, there's people buying boats all over the place. Marine max, there's sales through the pandemic, and, you know, all people need to get their boats fixed. Marine repairs. So I want you to expand, looking, broadening the vision of what we can do to support those type of industries, which in turn create the uniqueness that has been part of Tarpon's culture, and we can revitalize that. And lastly, I don't see Mr. Geddes here. And I know sometimes when he speaks, we wonder, you know, where is he coming from? But sometimes we've listened, and he's got maybe a clue on something we don't know about. And the reason why I bring that up, so this is the Business Observer, public notices. You get these every week. And this is the interesting notice, notice, and you can look this up through Pinellas County Clerk. The case number is twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-eight-six-two-nine-dash-CI. "The people of the State of Florida at all versus Governor of the State of Florida, political subdivision, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Chance to record Pinellas County Cert- judicial district. Default judgments were entered against Ken Burke, Charles Thomas, Bob Gud- Bob Gudtiere, Mike Twitty, Alexander Lu, et cetera, et cetera, and confirmed by unanimous jury." And it has to do about a whole bunch of constitutional stuff, about the original Florida Constitution in eighteen thirty-eight, and then there were revisions in eighty-five and sixty-eight, and those revisions weren't valid. And so basically, the jury agreed that the ultimate thing is that they said was, I'm sorry, it says, "They breached their duties of care, giving aid and comfort for the implementation of communist principles to be enacted, disguised, and camouflaged within Florida laws, statute codes, rules, regulation, ordinances. Petitioners contend their actions and lack thereof are mounted to a confession of maliciously and wantonly breaching of their offices and loyalties." And they found findings for one and two. So you can look up CI twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-eight-six-two, or twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-eight-six-two-nine-dash-CI. I haven't read the whole briefs, but it makes you wonder. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay. Ms. Menusus, did we have any emails that we received? Okay. Just a couple of comments on the Maritime Commerce Committee. It's still a committee, it's never been dissolved. But what's happened is some of its members have moved out of town, and also, they're in different committees. So there's been a little bit of discussion of reconvening that committee at some point, but there's got to be a specific purpose for it, and that may be something that we're going to talk about in next year, sometimes, maybe January or so. The other thing is, all this discussion of lawsuits and stuff, I, there is a lot of talk, but a lot of the talk is just that. I wouldn't overthink these things too much. If you want to know what's going on with all these lawsuits, you can go to the County Clerk's office, Clerk of the Circuit Court, and get all the records and the motions and everything that's going on with any of the lawsuits involving the city. And so, believe me, there just isn't, there just isn't that much going on about it, and there certainly isn't any kind of nefarious reason of why we're not doing something when we should be doing something. We've got a very good litigation attorney sitting to our right that has been handling these things, and I've got full confidence in him that he'll continue doing so, and he'll brief us whenever he has something that is important to us. So let me go on to the consent agenda. Item one is satisfaction release of liens. Item two is attorney's fees. Johnson-Jackson, P L L C, invoice one-two-zero-three-zero. Item B is person, Cohen Mooney Fernandez and Jackson, P A, invoices four-four-nine-six and four-four-nine-seven. Item three is special event, pre-war motor show. Item four is increased file number two-one-zero-zero-nine-two, purchase of work uniforms. Item five is extend contract one-eight-zero-one-one-eight, disaster debris monitoring services. Item six is award file number two-four-zero-zero-three-seven, first responder radios and parts and accessories. Are there any of these items that a commissioner would like to pull for asking further questions of staff? Okay. Are there any public comments on any of these items? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments on any of the consent agenda items?
If anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand, and we'll allow you in. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve items one through six.
Motion to approve consent agenda items one through six.
Second. Okay. Are there any comments by the commissions on any of these items? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticotis?
Yes. Okay. Let's move on to special consent agenda. Item seven, Union Academy Neighborhood Cultural Resources Survey, update and direction, City Manager La Coras. Yes. Renee will be bringing forward the people who are going to be giving the presentation tonight and introduce them.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Renee Vincent, planning and zoning director with the City of Tarpon. I want to introduce Jason Newton with Chronicle Heritage. He's going to be doing the presentation this evening. The first presentation is on the Union Academy Neighborhood Cultural Resources Survey. If you recall, the city did receive a grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation to identify document and document resources, historical and cultural resources of the Union Academy Neighborhood. We issued requests for proposals. They were then known as Paleo West. They were selected to do the work, and they've been engaged with us for some time now. So I'm going to let Jason do the presentation, and then we can come back to discussion. Basically, this evening, we're asking you to accept the Resources Survey and provide additional direction to staff concerning some of the findings and where we go from here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hi. So my name is Jason Newton. I'm a senior architectural historian with Chronicle Heritage, formerly Paleo West. And we have just completed the Cultural Resource Assessment Survey of the Union Academy Neighborhood here in Tarpon Springs. And so this is just a little presentation, just to kind of not go through the history and all that, but just to basically give you an idea of what our findings are, and also to provide you with some recommendations moving forward with the Historic Preservation Initiative. Okay. So just an overview of the Cultural Resource Survey. The purpose of the project was to identify, document, and preserve the historic and cultural resources of the Union Academy Neighborhood, which is a historically black neighborhood here in Tarpon Springs. The survey consisted of historical research, oral interviews, and an architectural survey of all historic resources constructed before nineteen seventy-five. The project aims to provide a framework for future preservation planning to prevent further loss of historic resources within the survey area. Historic resources in the survey area were all evaluated for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. And over the course of the oral interviews that were undertaken as part of the survey, we actually expanded our survey area a little bit. So we were originally just doing the Union Academy Neighborhood, but through talking with some of the people during the oral survey, we found the Crosstown Neighborhood, which is just adjacent on the northwest, and so, which is also historically African-American community. So we went ahead and added that to our survey area as well. Okay. Just an overview of the oral history that we did. There were a total of fifteen interviews that were completed with both current and former residents of Tarpon Springs, who have ties to that neighborhood. Interviewees shared their individual experiences and histories, as well as their thoughts on the Union Academy Neighborhood. Churches and the Union Academy building themselves were consistently indicated as the most significant locations in the neighborhood, as well as Ed Dorsett Park and Ed Dorsett's barber shop. Recurring themes that came up included segregation, integration, and racism. And just in general, the main, the main purpose of this, of this oral section was just to address gaps in the archival record in the Black history of Tarpon Springs. Just a summary here of the survey findings. We documented fifty-eight previously recorded historic buildings and two-hundred-and-fifty-seven newly recorded historic buildings, as well as three resource groups. There were three resources that we recommend to be individually eligible for listing in the N R H P, and I'll go over those in a little more detail here in just a second. Just some overall dates for historic buildings, just to kind of broken down there so you can see. World War II and aftermath and contemporary is where most of the buildings are, but we do have some earlier ones as well that date back to the Great Depression and the New Deal. Now, most of them, just over half, are single-family residences, but we also have some commercial buildings and some apartment buildings in the neighborhood as well. And this is just a map to give you an idea of some of the building periods of what we found. You can see the Crosstown Survey Area up there in the northeast, in the orange, and then we have the Union Academy Study Area in blue. And the little dots there just kind of give you an idea of where we saw some concentrations of different buildings with different construction periods. Also, just a quick rundown of different architectural styles we found. Masonry vernacular, frame vernacular, and then, of course, ranch. These were the most common found, which is pretty typical of four historic neighborhoods where most of the construction is post-World War II, especially also of vernacular residences typically in lower income areas. That's usually where we'll find more vernacular architecture and less high architecture. There were some others in there, like folk Victorian, colonial revival, things like that. But by and large, it was, it was vernacular structures that were surveyed. And here's just another little map for you, just showing the different types of structures that we found there, from bungalows to vernacular, and just kind of where, where those are located in the neighborhood. This is all located in the survey report. Of course, along the larger streets, you see we have a lot of historic commercial buildings that we documented there. And then in the residential sections, we see more of those concentrations of bungalows and vernacular residences. Union Academy School Campus, so this is the first, the first resource that we're recommending for individual eligibility. It's actually a resource group, and it consists of two contributing buildings and one non-contributing building. We're recommending the school campus eligible for the N R H P under Criterion A at the local level for education, as well as Black ethnic heritage. The period of significance for this runs from nineteen nineteen to nineteen sixty-nine, and it was a significant educational facility for Black youth in Tarpon Springs, and it was also a focal point historically of the Black community. And the photo at the right is just an example from the building, main building in nineteen thirty-nine. And these are just a couple of photos of the building currently today that were taken during our survey earlier this year. Next one of significance is the Ed Dorsett Barber Shop, located on Lincoln Avenue. Again, we're recommending this building individually eligible for the N R H P under Criterion A and B for commerce and Black ethnic heritage. This period of significance is from fifty-four to seventy-two. And just like the Union School Campus, Union Academy School Campus, this barber shop was also served as a center for the local community. And it's also associated with Ed Dorsett, who was a significant community leader during his productive lifetime in Tarpon Springs. The last significant building that we want to recommend eligible for the National Register is the church located on Pine Street, Mount Moria A M E Church. We're recommending this eligible under Criterion A at the local level for for Black ethnic heritage and also for settlement in the areas of significance. This period of significance is 31 to 73. And it's a significant social institution in the crosstown community. And it's also one of the last remaining resources with an evident association to the historically Black neighborhood. And it's the oldest standing church in Tarpon Springs that is associated with the period of Black settlement earlier in the city's history. Now, we also have a couple of resources here that we wanted to point out that we don't believe have the integrity necessary to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, but we would recommend them for local designation. The first one here is Ed Dorsett Park. It does have eligibility under criterion A as an entertainment and recreation area for the African-American community and also ethnic heritage Black. However, unfortunately, this one does lack the integrity, we believe, due to significant alterations, additions, and improvements since the 70s. And so, we don't recommend it eligible for the National Register. But we do, we would like to recommend that the city at least consider local designation for the park, just for its association with the distinct social and cultural history of the Black community here in Tarpon Springs. The second one is Ed Dorsett's House. Again, eligible for the NRHP under criterion B. However, it lacks the integrity due to some significant alterations. And so, thus, we are not recommending it eligible for the National Register. Again, though, we do recommend that the city consider a local designation for this building, specifically under criterion three for its association with Ed Dorsett. We also looked at the area overall to determine whether or not it could be a potential National Register Historic District. We did identify the local boundaries. And a lot of this, it had to do with our survey work. It also had to do with the oral history interviews that were conducted in order to determine what the, what proper boundary should be. And within these boundaries, there's 173 resources. And 162 parcels containing approximately 194 nonhistoric buildings as well. 31 additional documented historic buildings within these boundaries are recommended non-contributing to a district, just due to loss of integrity, because there's been so many alterations to them. So, of the 397 potential properties we found within the district boundaries, only 43.47% are recommended contributing to a potential district. The significant amount of nonhistoric infill and vacant lots in the potential district boundaries has diminished the district's integrity to a degree that Chronicle Heritage does not recommend pursuing National Register eligibility for the Union Academy District at this time. Now, although that is our recommendation, we would like to point out that there is a potential local historic district evaluation. We do encourage the city to consider local designation of the potential Union Academy Historic District. Per the city code of ordinances, the potential Union Academy District could be considered eligible for local designation under criterion two for its association with the distinct social and cultural history of Tarpon Springs' Black community. While local designation would not afford opportunities for the federal historic tax credits for contributing resources, the development of design guidelines and the enforcement of demolition review as a result of local designation could aid in the retention of the Union Academy Neighborhood's historic fabric. As additional buildings in the neighborhood reach historic age, the city can always reassess. So, just because we don't find the neighborhood, that the neighborhood has enough integrity for National Register listing at this time, as more buildings become historic, that's something that definitely could be revisited in the future if the community decides to do so. In the meantime, we recommend local designation, because, believe it or not, the local designation actually can provide more protections to historic properties than National Register designation can. National Register designation affords some protection to the property when state or federal money is being used, or state or federally funded projects. However, local community design guidelines can be more stringent and actually afford quite a bit more protection lots of times. So, that's why we would recommend that course of action at this time. And here's just a little map for you, showing the potential historic district boundaries as we determined during our survey. Okay, and finally here, last thing is just to go over some recommendations we have for you all. We do encourage the city to pursue the recommendations set forth within our cultural resource report, including the NRHP designation and local designation of the resources that I just went over. City staff, elected officials, and interested residents can use the information within this cultural resources report to promote awareness of the historic fabric of the Union Academy and the crosstown neighborhoods. Possible steps to disseminate this information within the report include making the report available online or in public spaces, such as the local library or community centers, or through formats like story map or pamphlets. We also encourage the city to continue working with the residents and advocacy groups to locate, identify, and assess resources for potential National Register eligibility, both within the existing districts and in previously unsurveyed areas as well. We recommend that the city assess previously documented resource and NRHP listed resources in order to ascertain potential associations with the city's historically Black communities, since a lot of this history just may have been overlooked in the past. We also recommend that the city continue the effort to collect oral histories. They're super helpful, just as far as putting together the overall history of a neighborhood, especially where there's not, neighborhoods where there's not as much archival documentation available. And they really do provide good insight. So, it's definitely, definitely a good effort to take in an effort to preserve some of this history for underrepresented communities. The upkeep of historic buildings, of course, as everybody probably knows, can be expensive. But the city could work with a consultant or even internally to gather information on tax incentives, provided both by the state or the federal government, that may be able to ease the financial burden associated with preservation efforts. Also, the connection between preservation and sustainability. Most historic buildings are actually designed for their environment. And contrary to popular belief, that makes many of them quite energy efficient. So, rehabilitating and adaptively reusing these buildings is just one way to revitalize an existing building. So, we do encourage the city to promote the use of historic tax credits to embrace historic buildings as a green development option moving into the future. Chronicle Heritage recommends addressing disaster preparedness in a preservation planning capacity. Hurricanes, of course, pose a regular threat. And it's recommended that disaster, a disaster preparedness plan also be developed with the historic resources in mind. And that is a summary of our findings for the cultural resources effort. So, I will open it up to any questions or comments.
Okay, let's go to public comments first. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any?
Your lack is 514 Ashland Avenue. Couple of things come to mind. The gentleman's talking about tax increment financing or grants and stuff. And on the next item, you're going to be talking about creating a CRA. So, I'm not sure how much overlap that has with this. And maybe that should be part of the discussion in this so it gets a better understanding about that aspect of the financing. That aside, if we want to talk about historic, I'll stand here and tell you, and you heard you, and you saw Annie come up here and talk about creating a museum. She spoke about the property that the city foreclosed on, on Oakwood and, what is it, Levis or somewhere? I don't remember the exact address. That should be included as part of any kind of historical preservation. Now, if you create a district, I guess my question legally and staff and planning people-wise is, a lot of these rules are to preserve existing structures, correct? Correct. Is there a way to implement in policy and in your historic neighborhood guidelines, guidelines for new construction? Because what's happening in the Union Academy Neighborhood is some lots are disappearing and small houses, which I saw a tiny house further up on Lime Street. But there's a lot on Lime and Gross. I was coming back from the post office and I keep telling you, you need to open up Lime Street and the Safford Trail, break that open. There's a lot that has a sign, some design firm in something. So, something's going to be built there. Do we have plans to say what type of structure, what it can be? You know, they'll put in a site plan as long as they meet this. Maybe, well, is that smart code area too? I don't know. Got a lot of overlapping things. You found that out with SpongeDox, you find that out with a number of properties. So, those are my things. The funding through the joint with the CRA, Annie's museum, and protection of what will be coming. Because lots are going. And if someone's going to buy a lot, and if they can put a fourplex in versus a single-family home, and they can legally do it, that's what's going to happen unless you have some kind of guidelines. And again, I'm not, I don't live there, I can't speak for you. But I drive through there, I know. So, I want you to make sure you have a voice in saying what you want built around you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Katie Taylor, 1991, Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. I'm not sure what gentleman was talking about, a museum for Ms. Dabs. With all due respect to Ms. Dabs, I can't see no museum in the community right now for Ms. Dabs because there's other things that we, there's other things that we need in our community. So, like he was saying, a lot of things have already been torn down. So, I'm trying to figure out where does the lines blur, because I'm kind of blurred on A and B here. A lot of historical buildings are already gone, you tore them down. So, I was talking before about the opening Lime Street at Safford Avenue that connected alternate 19. That need to be opened. And also, we need new businesses. I'm not sure where the CRA program can put in new Black businesses along Safford Avenue, because we need businesses down there. Mr. Dorsett had a barber shop. We got barbers right there in the neighborhood who need to open a business right there in our community along that trail. There's hair salons that we can put in that area right there. So, there's new businesses that we need to have. And also, is there a possibility for a Habitat for Humanity program to be established in the Tarpon area? If you want to talk about a historical house, Ms. Wilson, Janie Wilson's house was one that we should have saved, because that house served the oldest Black cemetery in this community. For a long time, her house was an office, and it got away from us. Another historical building right on that corner was torn down. So, I would like to see people like that homes, something be established for that community. Our church is 140 years old, Mount Herman. So, there are other businesses in our community that also can be looked at. But those are the main things I'm concerned about. New businesses, opening that trail, and having something for Habitat of Humanity. And also, for Dorsett Park, if we can, would that cover some kind of recreation center to have at Dorsett Park? Because that's a place that all the community gather. All the people, we go up there and play baseball. It's a gathering place for our community. So, a recreation center would be nice if you can look at something for that, for Dorsett Park.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other comments?
Tina Pukavales, 115 Athens Street. And I'm the person, actually, I didn't meet you, but I work for other people in Paleo West to do the oral histories on this and some of the history. So, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Okay. Katie had some really great ideas. And also, I want to say, one of the things she mentioned was Mount Herman Church, which is actually the oldest church that we know of founded in Tarpon Springs. Now, it has changed location, but is still worthy of note as the oldest church in Tarpon Springs. And I think that could be included in any, in looking at the significance of it. But I want to say that I think it's a great idea to locally designate this. And as I was recently told by the state Historic Preservation Officer, that you can have different levels of rigor in the kinds of things required for different districts. And so, you might think about that. The other way that this could be designated is as a Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. And both of these ideas and opportunities will be coming up as some of the ordinances that are being changed are coming into view. But this is a very significant community, and I do hope you will consider some kind of local designation. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Good afternoon, or good evening. Zeb Atkinson, 621 East Horn Street. I am not as familiar with Paleo West as I am with your counterparts that are down in Clearwater. But I do know an architect that went to work for you guys. So, I understand the work that you do is more informing of what is, what could be, and what may be. So, I would also encourage the commission to look at local designations for those things that can be designated, local historic designations. And then, in that area designation, maybe like Tina was saying, an overlay that would help protect some of the properties that are currently there that might not be fully historic because of the work that may have been done previously. But again, I think that when you start talking about designating an area, an historic place, that comes with a lot of different things that the community, in my estimation, would need to vote on or agree to. They might not want to be a historic district, right? They might not, because, you know, when you're a historic district, you want to change your windows. That's a problem. You know, there's a lot of different things that have to be done. So, I would just encourage everyone to look at that, consult with the community, find out what they want to do, and then go from there. But I do enjoy the work that you and Cardinal both do.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, Maggie Miles, 433 East Borry Street. I just want to commend all efforts regarding the CRA effort. Renee, Caroline, the whole planning department, and you, sir, your group, and the city for encouraging this effort. I really appreciate it, the look that is being taken for the Union Academy. I feel it's been forgotten to a certain extent. We have lost a lot of history, lost a lot of buildings, lost a lot of history. But it's not too late. And so, I am in hopes that in my lifetime, I will see some of these things recovered and a history that my granddaughter will be able to see that Tarpon Springs did mean something. And she'll be able to see where I'm from, that it did matter and had some significance. So, thank you for all efforts that went into this project. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Let's go to commission comments. I'm going to start this off. I've got a couple of questions on the presentation. First of all, let me just say that establishing a local district, a character district, a cultural district, I think that's easily done. The key's going to be to keep it. And that's the part that is always a challenge, not just for, because commissions change. And that's the part that is always a challenge, not just for, because commissions change, priorities change, and that sort of thing. What we've done in the past is, any of these important things, we memorialized them in the charter. I'm not sure that this or Greektown Historic District would be, would fit in that. But that's something that we should consider when the Charter Revision Commission takes its seats in March. And some of the questions I have, it may be better for Ms. Vincent to answer or somebody from her staff, so let me, just bear with me. Ms. Vincent, I know one of the recommendations was to create a disaster recovery or protection plan. Didn't the county do a survey of susceptibility or risk assessment to buildings?
They did, so that's something we need to look at and incorporate into, especially in the next agenda items, we talk about moving forward with the CRA, if we move in that direction, incorporating those things in as part of this overall planning effort.
Were they just doing the susceptibility, or they're gonna come up with some recommendations as well as...
I believe they had recommendations. I'm a little flat-footed on it, but yes, I can bring that back to the board, you know, as part of this process. But I do believe they did make final recommendations.
Alrighty. The other thing is, if you can go back to the Mount Mariah, AME Church, the photo of that. And... Back the other way. Right there.
Yeah.
On the lower photograph, you see that little blue building to the right of that? We keep missing it. But there's a very high probability that that's the first schoolhouse that was on the corner where the Greektown Community Center is now. And when they built the other school, which is no longer there and was demolished, was basically a high school, that schoolhouse was slid down the hill to that location. And that one dates back, that one right there, it's been modified, but that's the schoolhouse. And you can kind of verify all of this through the Sanborn Insurance. That's where, in my understanding and a little bit of research that I did, is where the city's charter was signed in 1887. So if you look at the property appraiser, I think it dates it back to 1925, but I think that's just a...
That's a little cut off, yeah.
But I think it goes back further. So that would be an extremely important resource that we should at least explore a little more. And if that is the case, that we can come up with some convincing evidence of that, that would be great. The other thing too was, can you, maybe putting in your own, I know you and I spoke about this today. But the other thing, what exactly have we approved so far? I know you're looking for some approval of the recommendations going forward for this presentation. Also, some guidance. But I know we've made some approvals concerning the Union Academy neighborhood, or was that just approving studies and things like that, moving forward with the CRA process?
Correct, correct. We don't have anything official out there, you know, approval-wise that... I'm sitting and looking at City Manager too, I think we're just, we've been in the study mode now for a couple of years.
Did we ever approve something like a character district or anything like that, or?
No.
We've talked about it in the strategic plan, I think.
And that's where, you know, so moving forward, you know, again, and this is kind of some of the same concepts that we're contemplating for Greektown, for the Greektown area, how do we, you know, how do we protect the area? You know, either through, you know, maybe we expand the smart code and create a character district specifically for that area that lays the groundwork for, you know, a smart code designation that gets to the form and some of the design without being overbearing. You know, we really have to, you know, from this point forward, we really still need to work, you know, significantly with the community to determine what they want to, you know, what works for them. You know, a full-blown historic district even locally may not be, you know, may not be, you know, what's desirable. A conservation district, something to that, to that nature. So we're working toward that, that we're gonna, so we'll take these findings. This certainly provides the framework for what, you know, what's possible and documents all those resources that we need to take that next step.
Coming out of this, are you gonna need some additional funding to implement some of the recommendations?
We may, yes. But let me put some thought behind that and get with City Manager on what we may need moving forward.
I mean, that's okay with me, I just wanna make sure that we don't fall short on this process.
Yeah, we have two, you know, the next agenda item, where we talk about the CRA, that is a funding mechanism in and of itself, but we still have some work to do to get there for that. And there may be an, there may be a need there as well from a funding perspective to produce the necessary plan, and we can pull all these things together in that process.
Okay, and I have additional comments concerning this, but it relates to the next item, so I'm gonna save those for that. And let me go to the other commissioners right now. Thank you, it was a very good presentation. I'm glad you found that many historic buildings. We've lost a few like the Odd Fellows Hall. You know, that was, to me, a tremendous loss, which I would've liked to have seen preserved, but... Vice Mayor Lon.
Yeah, I have a couple of, I don't know, esoteric questions. One is, there was a mention about historic age. What does that mean?
So historic age is defined as basically anything 50 years or older.
That 50 years or older, okay, so there's a definition for that, which is interesting.
And for surveys like this, we do try to put a little buffer on it of a few years, since it takes a while to, you know, get the report out and stuff.
I understood, okay. So, and this probably is more for Renee than yourself. What would happen, for example, to the original AME Church on Pinellas Avenue if it gets designated as a national historic site? So right now, it's some sort of a business is happening there, windows have been bricked up, the building has changed, obviously, or been changed over the years.
So individual listing on the National Register doesn't bring any additional regulatory controls around the property. What it does do is it makes it eligible for that property owner, if they do wanna do renovations and improvements to the building, like especially like taking it back to its original, you know, exterior, then they can get tax credits for that. So there's a benefit to being listed, and it's not on the National Register. It's not really a regulatory mechanism unless we go farther and designate it locally and put some protections in place.
So if we designate it locally and put some protections in place, that's, excuse me, that still doesn't mean that it's ever gonna be renovated back to its original condition. Because quite frankly, I have walked and driven by that building dozens and dozens of times, and this was a total new look for me. I looked at it and went, wait a second, it was a church at one time. It's evident it's a church.
Yes.
But it certainly isn't from walking on the other side of the street.
Oh, no, it's been individually owned and, you know...
I'm old enough to tell you, I remember when it was a church. And it was used.
I appreciate it.
And we've driven by there when church services were going on.
I will say that, you know, if you don't know, it's currently, I don't know if it's owned or if it's just being leased by the Ankle Distillery. But they, and they're, they've done actually, they're very receptive to the historic quality of that building and preserving that and improving it, so hopefully we can continue that.
Yeah, because from my personal point of view, when I see old buildings like that that are still standing and in relative good repair, I think restoration is the way to go.
Sure. I was happy to see all the metal siding come off of it.
So our local designation can be more restrictive, I understand, than a national designation, which really doesn't put as much fine points on what you can or cannot do with a property. When we do that, so I understand, you know, for the historic AME Church, I don't believe that the existing AME Church falls under those regulations. Dorsett Park might fall underneath it. Dorsett's actual, you know, his older barber shop slash ice cream parlor slash whatever it was at one particular time might fall under that. We can also, and I think we've had this discussion before, if we choose to designate this, along with the idea of the CRA and stuff, which we're gonna be discussing in a minute, we can still do forms-based code, right?
That's absolutely an option, yes.
I think, although I'm a proponent of forms-based code, because it allows you to justify things. I guess the only other statement I have about that is, it's gonna be particularly hard to get to a vernacular structure-type thing for this particular neighborhood. I was actually kind of surprised when I first read this about the Croftstown area. I was kind of like, well, this is getting expanded out of control, then. Quite frankly, I read through the oral interviews twice. And I was specifically touched by almost all of them. Understand the full reasoning now, so. Anyway, that's my comment. I'm a good proponent of us doing whatever we can to both preserve and perhaps restore this neighborhood to what it should be.
Okay, Commissioner Kulianis.
Thank you, thank you for the research that was provided, and I just wanted to... This is a, you know, just what we hear what's going on right now. It's very important that we hear from residents of that community on what type of direction you want the community to go to. I'm gonna make some general comments of what I would like to see here in the near future. And we've, and I've mentioned it plenty of times before, a lot of those properties on the east side of that Safford Avenue, that Pinellas Trail, I'd like to see rezoned back to mixed use. I wanna try to encourage that area that was once a business area for the black community as well. And there are some properties that are still currently black-owned, and I'd like for them to be able to have that ability or, you know, option to see what they'd like to do with those properties under mixed use. And we've talked about before how some properties are owned by Pinellas County. Well, I think now is the time for us to reach out to them and say, hey, you know, I know you have it listed as affordable housing, but we wanna encourage business in that area and walkability. And we'd like to see it rezoned back to mixed commercial use, mixed building use for, you know, storefronts, and try to recreate a spark in the area. And, you know, there's a lot of buildings that were behind the former Winn-Dixie parking lot that, or the plaza from MLK to Harrison Street that were once big contributing factors to the economy and the business, the businesses in that area. So I'd like to see what we could do and maybe facade grants or some type of incentive to get property owners over there to reinvest in that area. I think it's very important. And, you know, whether we try to, whether we try from a national or local historic district or none, we need to promote and embrace the Union Academy neighborhood as the oldest black community in Pinellas County. I think that's the most important thing from it all, and just constantly promoting it to our youth to encourage it and let them know to be proud of where they come from. And, you know, we talk about the Ed Dorsett Barber Shop. Actually, that barber shop was actually still running as a barber shop until the early 2000s. I used to get my hair cut by the late Robert, and it was actually a cool hangout spot too. So it was operating like that, and I think we need to try to encourage every building that they recommended, or every contributing structure that could be in a national historic register to. We do that as soon as possible, and even encourage those property owners with some type of grants to help restore those buildings, because I think it's very important. And... Yeah, I think we mentioned that, what I need to mention about just trying to promote the area and bringing it life again in one of its most important parts, the trail, and trying to listen to the residents and understanding that there is change that's happened, a lot of change that's happened. And, you know, you see houses being built that necessarily don't fit the character in the neighborhood. Is that something you would try to encourage or something you don't wanna see happen? And I think that's, you know, we need to hear from you on it. So as we see how this process goes, it's, we'll have some public outreach, and I'm sure staff will be able to work with many of the individuals in the area to see what we can come to and move in a direction that everyone can agree with. So thank you.
Vice Commissioner Kulianis.
Yep. Thank you for your work. It's an important project. I think that what the gentleman said is important, that the residents know what the, have input on how this, the neighborhood should, the whole Union Academy neighborhood should be handled, whether it's historic districts or, you know, local or federal or state or whatever it is we're gonna do. I think that there needs to be input from the citizens. They need to know what the ramifications are of all those things so they can make decisions. However, it also matters to all of us. So I think it definitely is a, something that should be concerned to all citizens. I think that, you know, long-term, a concern of mine has always been, you know, the gentrification of that whole area. That it does get preserved as an African-American community, and that it stay that way as much as we can to maintain that integrity of that neighborhood, because I think it's really important. So that, so I think there's, it's all part of a large, comprehensive study and input. And all the protections necessary to preserve that whole area is important, so. But this is a great start. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, if you can help us out a little bit as far as a motion goes. And let me just ask commissioners, are there any of the recommendations that you've got an issue with? I think they're somewhat general in nature and not very specific, and I think most of any of the work is gonna come back to the commission in some form or another. The funding, which we would need, I think is gonna be worked out with the City Manager during the budget time. And then we've got this other item next, but after we do the ordinance to kind of tie in some of the things that, which is what I wanna discuss that Commissioner Kulianis has just raised. So if I can just have a motion to adopt the recommendations as presented, and if there's anything else that you would like to add, that's making the motion, go ahead and do that.
Motion to accept the preliminary rec...
Second.
Motions to accept the preliminary recommendations that were presented by staff in the report.
Second.
Second, okay. If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Kulianis?
Yes.
Mr. Kulianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lon?
Yes.
Mayor Mattiagis?
Yes. Okay. Ms. Vincent, we're gonna go to the ordinances, and if you could just kind of stay up there. By our rules of procedure, we begin our ordinances resolutions at 7:30. So we've got one ordinance this evening, Ordinance 2023-23, Application 22116, Resoning of 1404 Meyer Lane. And it is a quasi-judicial hearing. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the procedures for the quasi-judicial hearing, swear any witnesses that we have, and then go through the ex parte, you know, questions as far as any of the commissioners may have.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. If anybody's gonna testify, could you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, are there any ex parte communications that the commission would like to do? Are there any ex parte communications that the commission would like to divulge? Okay. Ms. Vincent, is this gentleman the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. This is the second reading and we've had our first reading, I think, just a week ago. Okay, Ms. Vincent, please.
Do you want to read the ordinance by title first?
Yeah, oh yes, I'm sorry, yes. Please do so.
Ordinance 2023-23, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the official zoning atlas for 0.0 acres, more or less, of real property located at 1404 Meyer Lane on the southwest side of Meyer Lane, approximately 100 feet southeast of Keystone Road, from zoning District R100A, single-family residential, to zoning District R60, one- and two-family residential, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That's ordinance 2023-23, read by title only on second reading.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vincent, proceed, please.
So just, I'll very quickly go over the high points of this since it's second reading. This is ordinance 2023-23 for application 22-116, 1404 Meyer Lane. This is a rezoning application of a single-family lot from R100A to R60. There's been no new information to enter into the public record since first reading, no additional public comment. Staff recommendation is to approve the rezoning as requested. The Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval of this unanimously. There's no associated land use map change, that all stays the same. So with that, if there's any additional questions since first reading, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Vice Mayor La?
Has there been any additional evidence presented since our last meeting?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I see no reason not to.
Anyone else? Okay. The applicant, do you have any questions for Mrs. Vincent on anything that she said? This isn't your presentation, just if you have a question on anything that she said. Okay. Ms. Vincent, obviously you want to enter your staff report into evidence.
Yes, thank you.
Sir, if you would like to make a presentation or any comments that you have, you don't have to. It's up to you.
Yes, hi, my name is Gene Iloa, 9649 Trumpet Vine Loop, Trinity, Florida. I just want to make a comment. Really good work that they've been doing here planning zoning as it was a long process on getting to this point. So just want to say thank you and hoping to be a future resident.
Hang on a second. Do any commissioners have any questions concerning the, for the applicant? Okay, Ms. Vincent, any? Okay.
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. There's no one here as an affected party? Okay.
No, sir.
Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments concerning the quasi-judicial item on Myers Lane?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vincent, a closing summation?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Let me go to the commission, see if any of you have any comments concerning this item.
There was no additional evidence pro or con introduced. I see no reason to change where we are at.
We're good. All right. If I can have a motion to approve the item and state the resolution, the ordinance number?
Motion to approve ordinance 2023-23.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor La?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticas?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Let's go back to the special consent agenda, item eight, Central Tarpon Springs CRA finding of necessity, update and direction, City Management Corps. Yes, Renee Vincent, let me give this one also?
Thank you. So kind of following up where we left off with the cultural resources survey for the Union Academy area, wanted to come back to the board this evening to talk about the possibility of what we're calling the Central Tarpon Springs Community Redevelopment Area. So a couple of years ago, it's been a little bit, the board did provide direction to staff to explore the idea and the possibility of establishing a community redevelopment area for the Union Academy Neighborhood. We started on that research and working with the Pinellas County staff and looking at the process, the finding of necessity process. I'll talk more about this, but the initial findings indicated that we really needed to expand the boundary a little bit, so that's a point of discussion tonight. So this is a larger area than what may have been originally envisioned and we'll talk about that. So with that, so for tonight, we'll talk about the study area, a little bit of the background overview of the CRA process itself, what our preliminary findings are and potential next steps. I want to emphasize, this is very much a draft finding of necessity. It still needs some additional polishing and everything, you know, to move forward. So it's, it's probably 90% there, but it still has some, some additional work to be done. So the study area largely on the north is abutted by, bounded by the Pinellas Trail, US 19 on the east, the city-owned landfill and Stonehenge on the south. And then this boundary really butts up against the existing, the existing community redevelopment area for the downtown and Sponge Docks. Or the downtown, I should say, the Sponge Docks is not in the CRA. So very high level, so, you know, a CRA is, is a, so special district designation, dependent special district under state statutes that, once established, allows or requires that real estate taxes, edvolorm taxes collected in that district, once you set a base share, there's an increment as, as property taxes naturally go up or that that increment gets set aside and those funds are spent inside the district. And so it's not just city, city real estate taxes, it's also the unincorporated county tax that people pay. So the real benefit is we get the county participating and their tax dollars staying in the area as well. So as you can imagine, there is a, a lot of requirements that you have to go through. We do have to meet state and county requirements. Once, you know, a redevelopment trust fund is established and then, as I said, that, that incremental growth stays, that those dollars have to be spent inside that, that district. So, so the tax increment financing, it doesn't, it doesn't increase taxes, it's not a new tax, it's capturing the existing taxes and keeping them in the district. So under the state criteria on chapter 163, you know, unfortunately, they use the term blighted, that's just unfortunately what we have to work with under state statutes. So, so the, within the study area, you, there's a series of factors that you evaluate and if you meet a certain number of them, then the area would deem to be qualified as a community redevelopment area and with the potential for a TIF district. You know, unfortunately, we have to kind of use this terminology, but it's, you know, it's not meant to, to be derogatory to an area, so please keep that in mind. These are some of the, the potential blighting factors that are in the state statute. There's actually like 16 of them now. It seems like every other year they add another one to the list for consideration. So, so again, the blight refers exclusively to statutory definition, but the study area itself, we very much recognize and as you just heard from the report on the cultural resources survey, this area is just, it's rich with history and, and social institutions that are vital to the city. So, you know, our goal is to, is to preserve that for the future. So in addition to the state review criteria, we also have to look at the Pinellas County criteria. So the, the county has their own policy, adopted policy standards and I apologize, I should have sent those out earlier, but I did send them out via email to you today, this afternoon, their latest policy direction on their participation in the tax increment financing district. So not only do they have to approve the district, they have regulations that, about how they participate and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But they, they have four broad areas that they evaluate, under demonstrated need, economic development, employment, housing affordability, and mobility. And then within those, there's like 12 different scoring mechanisms that they use to determine how, one, if we, if they will approve a redevelopment area and what their participation rate is, if you will. So the steps to create a CRA, the first step is we adopt a finding of necessity. So that draft finding of necessity that was in your agenda backup tonight looks at the state criteria, it also evaluates the Pinellas County criteria to, you know, and so we believe we have firmly made a case that this area is eligible to be established as a community redevelopment area with an associated redevelopment trust fund to fund projects and programs inside that area. So the next thing that we would need to, to do would be, for this board would be to actually adopt that finding of necessity. We're not asking to do that tonight, we're giving you a preliminary look at it. We would potentially bring that back in first quarter. We have to do a legal description for the actual area, so that's part of what we're asking tonight is to kind of bless the boundary, if you will, and let us get the legal description that we need and then bring the resolution back early next year for adoption. And then at that point, we transmit the finding of necessity to Pinellas County. The county then will review that finding of necessity and there will, usually there's some back and forth with the county on, on this. We may have to provide additional information, but it, it's, ultimately, we, we hope that they then give us, they, they adopt the finding of necessity and then they actually give a delegation of authority that allows for us to go ahead with a planning effort, create a plan for the CRA. We, we develop that plan and we adopt it, it goes to Pinellas County, they have to approve it, and only then does the redevelopment trust fund get established. So just so that people understand this process, you know, we're easily more than a year out from an actual redevelopment trust fund getting established. It takes, it's frustrating, but that unfortunately is the process that we have to follow. So the goal is again to establish a CRA, to preserve and enhance the study area within for the generations of people who live, work, learn, play, and worship, worship there. And what we really want is the people that live there to get the benefit of this and stay there. You know, we, we, you know, I hate to use the word term gentrification, we're trying to stop that, to be honest with you. We want people to stay there, we, they want them to be able to invest in their homes, their children to stay there, to work there, and so, and to just preserve and prosper. We're, you know, so we want to improve infrastructure, you know, increase economic opportunity and, you know, preserve the local culture and heritage. So what can a CRA actually do? So with, with redevelopment trust fund dollars, you have kind of two broad buckets. There's a lot of programmatic things you can do, like grant programs, there's going to be facade improvements, they can be home improvement grants, you know, wind mitigation, that you can do rental to homeowner assistance programs, you can do things that support affordable housing. And then on the capital side, your, your things that you more think, you normally think about, you know, street improvements, water and sewer. We have areas that need to, you know, come off of sewer and go, excuse me, come off of septic and go onto sewer, facility, you know, parks, recreation, things of that nature. So you kind of have programmatic and capital things. The other, the other kind of companion to this is with the CRA designation, it also sets us up specifically for consideration for certain types of community development block grant funds through Pinellas County. So there's an overlap and a synergy there where we can use CRA funds as matching dollars for community development block grant funds that can be used for these, all these same types of improvements so we can get a double bang for the buck. One of the things that we absolutely will have to do and is very good governance is anytime a new CRA is being proposed, the county requires that we have a citizen advisory committee for that CRA, that is a direct advisory board to, or committee to you as the community, you, the Board of Commissioners as the community redevelopment agency. We don't have that for the existing CRA, it wasn't a requirement then, it is a requirement of Pinellas County now. So, you know, if we move forward with the planning effort, I think the first thing we would probably want to do is try to, you know, get that committee formed and help and, help us inform development of that plan and, and, you know, right out of, you know, right off the bat. So of the, and the findings themselves, and actually this is, we're actually really positively up to at least eight of the 14 factors, qualifying factors, under the state statutes. Under the Pinellas County review, we would most likely qualify as for the urban revitalization designation, which gets us the maximum contribution from Pinellas County of 95% of, of the edvolorm tax increase each year. Just so that people understand too, under state statutes, redevelopment area can be up to 30 years, Pinellas County now limits them to 20 years. So that's just something we have to live with. And just our preliminary analysis, just if we projected out five years, you know, looking at, you know, average tax, normal tax, edvolorm tax increases through the years as property values increase, within that boundary, you know, we're estimating a little over a million dollars the first five years that would be then programmed back into that, into that area. So for tonight, we're hoping that you will give us a positive recommendation on this particular boundary. We'll go out for a legal description and we'll clean up and continue to refine the draft finding of necessity and then continue our public engagement efforts with the community and then hopefully bring this back in early next year for, for an adoption. So with that, I know I threw a lot out there and there was a lot of an agenda backup, so I'll stop and answer questions if you have any at this point.
Public comment, are there any public comments on this item?
1991 Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. I was going to ask you, does that program include like recreation funding, building for Dorset Park?
It, I think it potentially can. We have, there are restrictions about government facilities, so we have to look at that, but we can explore that.
Okay, and what about, you said housing and businesses, so what about the, if a business had a, where the person owned the, owned the business, but they lived in a lower part of the building? So would that, would that cover that kind of business?
It could, it could.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Zev Atkinson, 621 East Swan Street. This was great. I have been part of a CRA investigation down in Clearwater the last couple of years and I saw it come to fruition and I thought it was a good process there. I'm still involved with some of the people that got some grants and they're doing good things. So I've actually seen this as a, as a positive thing. And then, you know, in order for a community grow, those dollars need to be reinvested back into the community and some revitalization in it. Again, on this one, I would ask that the commission think strongly about accepting it and allowing it to go forward. And if you need any help, let me know.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. If you can unmute and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Peter Lacka, 514 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Renee, and I just want to point out, as Renee mentioned, this has been going on for a number of years, so a lot of work has been put into this and I want to say thank you to the staff for doing this. I was impressed with the variety of grants and things that were mentioned as far as availability and one of those things that you mentioned was rent to own. Too often, all the developments that are coming in are now apartment, they're not ownership. Ownership is gives what people a commitment to a community and investing in a community. So anything that can be done to accomplish transitioning from renting to ownership would be great. Also, as far as the funding, this is the perfect way to get grants and money out to the area. the area. So you can get it back into the people's hands who can actually benefit the most from it. I know it may be considered a take from one to another, but as Renee said, it's not an additional tax. And I want people to make sure they're aware of it. It's just a redirection of some of the funds that are already going to governmental authorities back into this district. So I applaud the staff for what they've done, as Renee has recommended. This preliminary, but send her on her way to get the boundary studies and get the further things done. And hopefully, within a year, we can be blessing a new TR, a new CRA that will help this particular area of our town that has been neglected for so long. Thank you.
Mr. Jump, anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. Let me go to commission comments, and let me start this off as well. The, Ms. Vincent, we, we talked about the community development block, block grant a little bit today. And when we did the Union Academy revitalization plan, this was before your time, we did have CDVG funds that, if you remember Officer Eddie Hayden, he traveled around the Union Academy, the traditional neighborhood, and basically, there was a lot of old buildings and cleanup of yards and stuff like that. So we used CDVG grants for that. In addition, we've got the CRA tax increment funds that would be coming in, as you said, $1.2 million over about five years, which is an estimate. The one thing, way back when, when I was city manager, I, I would have this conversation publicly with the commission when we were always trying to build the, the economy of Tarpon Springs is that we need to be careful and not price people out of their homes. And, you know, we've heard the word gentrification. It, it's kind of a buzzword, and, and I don't particularly, it, it's a real process. I don't particularly care for it. But the idea is that if we're going to establish a local historic district, a character district, we need to be very, very careful that we don't change the character. And that gets back to having people move out that historically have been their, their homes simply because they can't afford it. And all of a sudden, we've got a whole different demographic that's moved into the Union Academy. Hyde Park would be a perfect example of that. And Key West would be another one, a little further south. So the timeframe on this, I know you said 2025, but I, I think that that's, I mean, I hate to say it, I, I'm a little thinking it's a little optimistic.
It might be optimistic for the actual redevelopment trust fund, yes.
Right. And, and we're tied to the county on that. In addition to the, the committee, which I think you'd like to have sooner than later on that, right?
I, I haven't really obviously discussed that with city manager, but I think it would be a good, a good recommendation to go ahead and try to get that committee established.
So early next year, maybe you can bring that back?
Sure.
In addition, if everybody recalls, we've got a CRA board of the, the one that we have established, the downtown CRA. We will also need a separate board. No, it'll be the same board?
This board will be, you will, you can only have one community redevelopment agency. So you will serve as the agency for both, both districts.
Okay. And because we've established that as the commission for the first, we're stuck with that, right?
Right. We're, yeah, that's actually, that might even be in state statute.
I know.
So, yeah, so we're, yeah, we, we have one agency, but you can have multiple CRAs.
Okay. I was hoping we could have maybe a resident added. And I know there's attorney general opinions where they've said that people have asked for that, and, and I, I can't quite remember the, the outcome, but I think it was a little bit of difficult to add more people on there. So.
I think having the committee will.
The, the, right now, as far as funding for what you need to continue with this, you will need additional funding. And with this, is that correct?
Potentially. I mean, I'm pretty comfortable with my in-house staff. It's just, this is a workload issue at this point. So, you know, Caroline has done the lion's share of the work on this so far. We're all, have pretty good experience with CRAs and those plans. I certainly worked on the other side of Pinellas County of actually reviewing the plans and things when they came in. So, you know, we definitely have the ability to do it in-house. We might need some assistance, some technical assistance down the way. But well, we'll, we'll work through a funding request for that if necessary.
And I know just for the record, this, the, the boundary of this was tentatively going to be brought back forward maybe six or eight months ago at some point. And then we had discussed whether it was actually a conversation that took place with everybody. I know since then you've done that.
Yes.
You've done the outreach. So I think we're comfortable with the boundary in terms of having gone to the various communities.
Yes.
That are on the outskirts of the, the boundary. Okay. That's all I've got to say. Vice Mayor Lot.
I have no comments. I've been pretty well briefed so far.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes. Ms. Vincent, well, you said a lot of things. I just, I, I think this whole board really appreciated and just trying to keep the residents there and, you know, prevent certain gentrifications and whatnot. I think anything we can do to help residents, give them a, a purpose to help incentivize them, improve their properties, or any way to help them out, it's a great thing. Could this be a program where a property owner, for example, each year picks a different item to help upgrade their house and would be able to apply back to our city and recoup some funds through grant opportunities?
Sure. You know, so, I mean, you know, we can set up different, just like, you know, in our existing CRA, we have, we have facade improvement grants. We have various types of grants that are out there that are funded directly by the CRA. We can do that with residential, you know, they could, it might be, maybe it's, you know, windy roofs. That's a big insurance ticket item for people. You know, so yes, we can, you know, we can establish various grant programs that, that the residents would be able to apply for. You know, obviously we want to spread the wells as much as we can, but yes, we can definitely do that.
And I'm really happy these new lines and stuff. I, you know, I think it covers, I call it old Tarpon Springs. And that's a mixture of the Union Academy and other parts leading to the downtown Tarpon Springs. So I think it's great. I am concerned about this area, the, the southwest corner, which we have Tarpon Shores, we have the Palms, and we have, I believe it's the Woods, or it's just whatever that neighborhood is just north of the Woods. And basically what was formerly Mango Circle, which is now something related to the Eagles, I can't remember the exact name. But these have all been redeveloped recently, or maybe some of them haven't. But how much, how much do you guys think as staff those areas contribute to this new CRA that we're talking about? Because I, I really want, I see, I see the area, but I, I just want to make sure some of those funds are more directed towards those other houses that encircled in that area.
I mean, it's, it's something that, I mean, honestly, you know, that's something that we really need to work with the citizens, you know, over. I mean, the one thing I will say, inside this boundary, if you look at the zoning and the land use, it is, you know, there is definitely a higher percentage of multifamily residential zoning and land use. And so, you know, obviously, you know, from a developer standpoint, that tends to lead you toward wanting to do more intense, you know, housing, apartments and things. So it, it certainly, you know, if, if that's something that, that the community wants to be redirected or less emphasized, then that's part of that planning effort of, okay, you know, do we go to, you know, something that's one and two family instead of multifamily? Things like that would encourage single-family home development and infill single-family homes and things of that nature and promote that homeownership. That all we need to, we can do that? You know, obviously, that's a part of the, part of the planning effort.
Okay. I want to see this process move forward. I'd be interested to see if staff or this board would like to consider maybe try to exclude some of those pockets that I just discussed, and try to put more of the funds towards some of those older structures and incentivize them. But again, I want to take the recommendations and staff and what, what you think is, as we create these boundaries.
I wouldn't want to, I don't want to take them out of the, of the boundary. I think it's just a matter of, you know, this board and the, and the advisory committee that would be formed is going to direct how the funds, you know, you have to have a plan for how the funds are going to be used. And so, you know, a lot is in how you structure things as to how those, how those things will, will get spent. So I, I think we can accomplish what you're talking about through a planning process with the community.
Okay. Thank you. And the advisory board, that, did you state that would be the Board of Commissioners again? Was that only for the first year?
The, if we, the agency will be the Board of Commissioners. One of the things that we'll have to do is establish an advisory committee for the, for the central Tarpon CRA. So, and that will be appointed by this, by, by y'all as to, so we'll have to figure out a process for, it's like we do our existing committee appointments and things. So we'll, we'll hopefully come back, you know, next year, early in the, you know, in the first quarter, and maybe explore the, you know, how we want to set that up and get that planning process started.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Just for clarification, we, the, the boundary.
Mm-hmm.
And who is in that boundary? We had that conversation many months ago.
Yes.
This was in cooperation with the county to make it more competitive as establishing it with the CRA. So I, I think that that was the discussion we had.
Right.
That you felt it was important to include those other areas in here. And then Ms. Vincent went and her staff visited those other areas to make sure they understood what it's, what their, the purpose was of including them in there. So, okay.
Thank you both for clarifying that for me.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Kulianis?
Yeah. So let's, I want to talk about funding. So the, the existing CRA that we have now, there was a base established, right? A base of property values.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then we, anything above those, that base goes into the CRA.
Correct. Goes into a trust fund.
Okay. And we have seven years left on the existing CRA.
Yes.
Ron told me.
Yes.
Okay. So he said there's seven years left on the existing. So at the end of the seven years, do we establish a new base based on valuations at that time, or do we get to carry our old base forward?
The, so the, the existing CRA will.
They said it, did they?
The existing CRA is completely separate from the new one.
Yeah.
So when this, so basically, in 2031, our existing CRA, I'll use the term sunsets.
Right.
And at that point, the tax dollar ceased to be, they stopped going into the redevelopment trust fund. Pinellas County gets their piece back. They go back into the regular, the regular budgeting process and, you know.
Or do we apply again?
You, that is, that is open for discussion with Pinellas County, but I can tell you, it could be difficult. I'll just put it that way.
We will be, if, let's say we get it done in 25, we will be six years into the new CRA area, right? The additional.
Theoretically, five years maybe.
And then only have a few years left on the old one.
On the old one.
The old one will then.
It just stops. It just ceases to exist unless you go through a new process with Pinellas County and go through a finding of necessity and show why you think you need to have, you know, another 10 years or whatever. So.
So this, this funding, it's, and, and it's, last year, according to Ron, we had, it cost the city $492,000. When I say cost, $492,000 came out of the general funds.
Yes.
Went into the CRA. And then we got matching funds of $420,000. So we did well.
Mm-hmm.
But in a seven years, which could come quick, that, that money there will stop.
It will, yes. The, it will go back to the general fund for us, and Pinellas County's money coming in will stop.
So it's, it, it's important that we add the new CRA, right? Because then at least, because then we would have no additional.
Pinellas County money. Correct.
So it's actually to our benefit to add this additional area.
Yes. Yes.
Do you guys get what I'm saying?
Sure.
Okay.
Not really.
No?
I mean, the CRA money, the, the community redevelopment area for the Union Academy has to be spent within the Union Academy area.
Right. Right.
The other money that you're talking about is spent in the downtown CRA. So if that money goes away.
That ends in six, seven years. And then we would not have, we will, then it would cease to exist. We wouldn't get any county money related to CRA. So if we add this additional mon, we add, add this additional CRA now, this starts with a brand-new 30 or.
20 years.
20 years. It starts with a brand-new 20 years.
For the new, for the new CRA. I think he's just saying, we want to make sure we're capitalizing on getting money from the county.
That's my point. That's my point. We're capitalizing by, by, by getting this new CRA area, we're capitalizing on getting money. Because in seven years.
For that area.
Yeah, for that area.
Not for the downtown.
But in our city, our city will get money.
But it has, still has to be.
Well, I understand that. I understand that. But that's still funds coming from the county that we wouldn't get if we don't do this.
Okay.
That's my point. So, thank you.
Let's see. All right, Ms. Vincent. So what we need to do is have a recommenda, a, a motion for your recommendations. And is there anything, anything else that any of the commissioners want to say? If not, can, may I have a motion and state the motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the preliminary staff recommendations, the boundaries of the proposed CRA, give them authorization to obtain a legal description of the proposed CRA, update the draft finding of necessity for adoption by the Board of Commissioners in the first quarter of 2024, and direction to continue public engagement to develop a draft community redevelopment plan while the county is reviewing the finding of necessity attachments.
Second.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Ms. Vincent, you're okay, city manager, of course, you're okay with the, the direction of establishing that advisory committee next year without having to include that in the motion? Is that, is that okay?
Yes.
All right. If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Mayor Vade Kiotis?
Yes. Okay, that's item eight. And thank you, Ms. Vincent, for all of that.
Thank you. And I'm going to thank Caroline, because she's done the lion's share here.
Okay. Is Caroline still here?
She is.
There she is. Thank you, Caroline.
She's a little under the weather right now, so.
Commissioner Kulianis, five-minute break. Okay. If we could take a five-minute break, resource at 8:13 and reconvene at 8:00. Hey, let's. Reconvening the Board of Commissioners meeting at 8:20 PM. We've got the, uh, one addendum, which is, I think it reads approval of the Building Department audit. And, um, we, I'm not sure who to go to for opening, but this was something that, there was some discussion of continuing to table it. At the last meeting, the commission chose to remove it from table and to give, um, Ms. Kardashian opportunity to talk to Bill Pulos to clarify any, uh, issues for him to make some changes voluntarily based on our new, uh, resolution. He accomplished that. He met with, uh, Ms. Kardashian and company with Commissioner Kuliannis. Uh, Mr. Pulos made those changes and, um, I think after the meeting, we had a request from Ms. Kardashian, Commissioner Kuliannis to bring this matter forward this evening to get it out of the way before the first of the year, which is something, and honestly, I would like to have seen done. And, um, so, um, let me, i- is there any further? Commissioner Kuliannis, do you have anything more you want to add to this? This is something that you requested I should, should just open with you. So, go ahead.
Okay, so we met, um, uh, Attorney Kardashian, Mr. Pulos and myself, we met. And, um, the decision was, um, well, let me, let me explain why we, there, there are several reasons we wanted to get it done now. One is, like you say, get it over with in 2023, so we won't have to carry it with us to 2024, get this thing over with. Secondly, we're going to have, according to the, uh, city manager, we're going to have a very robust agenda, um, at first of the year. And, um, also Attorney Kardashian recommends that we move on this now, given, you know, the letter we received. So, um, because I think this remedies quite a bit of things. So let's, let me go through what the decision was. Mr. Pulos would resubmit his report, um, and he would include the previous items three through nine.
Commissioner Kuli, Commissioner Kuli, this was his decision, correct? Mr. Pulos's decision to make these changes?
Yeah, he acquiesced.
Okay. And you're in discussion with you and Ms. Kardashian?
Yeah, yeah. This was a, uh, it was a very amicable meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So he would resubmit report three through nine, um, and renumber them one through seven as you rece, as you have in front of you. Uh, the personnel matter that was included in items, original items one and two, um, he would submit his findings and his allegations to this, in a form of a memo, to the city manager and the HR director. The, um, the former employee, uh, will be, will be sent that memo and, uh, certified mail and have 30 days to respond to that, uh, those allegations and findings. Uh, those, both the memo and the response will be placed in the employee's file. And the city, um, as per our resolution, the city auditor has the right to go s- down and see the, you know, the actual findings and, and follow up on it. And any commissioner can have comments, you know, any, any meeting with the city auditor relating to this matter. But, um, this will put this matter to rest and this should be done.
Just for.
Going forward, this should be the, this will be the policy.
Again, for clarification, when you say that the auditor would follow up, he would simply read what was done and then he would report his, what was done to the commission privately? Is that correct?
Well, again, we don't, yes.
Okay. In conjunction, perhaps, with any attorney.
However, and, and it's up to him whether he wants.
In other words, he's not getting into personnel matters again.
He has the authority to, and the, uh, uh, he, he has the right to go follow up.
No, no. But he's not getting himself into personnel matters.
Not at all.
This is just, uh, uh, basically an informative process for, between him and the commission.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. That's where we're at. No, that's where I, that's it.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to start off with, uh, we, uh, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
Gary Posh, 1140 South Point Alexis Drive. Good evening. There's an old saying in politics that goes, if it has even the hint of impropriety, then err on the side of caution. Gentlemen, no matter how you spin it, you are taking an audit and editing out the parts that you don't care for. That's not an audit. That's a mutual admiration society report, nothing more. You can try to deny it all you want, but that's the perception we have. And adding this to the addendum at 4:00 PM today only served to reinforce that nagging perception. Now, I have no doubt as to the legality of this, but to call it morally bankrupt would be real charitable. The totally ham-handed way in which this entire matter has been handled has led many to take notice and speculate. To say you have a bit of a dumpster fire here would be pretty accurate. We see an obvious whitewash and we are certain that no one will ever be held to account. Transparency? What's that? Rover Cleveland once said that people get the kind of government they deserve. Well, I'm certain that we, the people of Tarpon Springs, deserve better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in. Don't. And we do have a raised hand, allow the first person in.
Okay.
If you can, state your name and address for the record.
Debbie McKinney, 1021 Rose Freeland. Um, I just want to say that I'm glad that one and two have become an employee, um, issue and, and it's been taken out of the audit. I disagree with the previous comments. Um, that's between this, the HR and whoever. And, um, and that three through nine should be, uh, approved and accepted tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jump, are there any other comments?
And we do have another raised hand, allow the next person in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I, again, I, I wish that we had a, a more thorough explanation about what happened here. I mean, hopefully we will get that, uh, in due time. But also on the last pages of the responses, it's highly confusing because there are no names here, but it, it keeps saying prior to my rehire, immediately upon my rehire, who is that speaking on pages 25 and 26? Um, that is rather confusing. It, it simply says the former and current building development director have been afforded an opportunity to respond to this report. Their responses are attached, but it does not say who is responding in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and so forth. And there are these observations. It doesn't say who's saying that. That's, that's rather confusing, so I hope somebody can clarify that. And also at some point clarify what exactly took place. Allow an employee to get pay off premises and also take upwards of 700 gigs elsewhere. It just doesn't make sense. People are confused and they just want to know. I mean, we realize nobody is going to be held accountable. We would just like to know what happened. So in the future, perhaps it could be prevented. And that's not a big ask. It would be a reasonable ask that someone be held responsible, but we're not even asking that. We're asking the bare minimum. Just let us know what, what happened. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jump, anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. Um, Mr. Salzman, just before we continue on and good to the commission, I have a question. On the HR records, uh, the personnel records, they are public count, uh, public record, is that correct?
Yes, they are. There are some exceptions, but for the most part, they are all public.
So as Ms. Jackson and Ms. Kardashian explained, once whatever we would call it an investigation or whatever is complete and that matter's closed, then it becomes a public record, what it's ever in the personnel file.
That is correct.
So this, uh, this kind of response to some of the questions that were heard tonight, as far as what we know hap, we know what happened, it's just, uh, why it happened and hopefully the response from, uh, the former building director in terms of whatever Mr. Pulos submits to the HR director would hopefully answer that. But we'll see. That we, that yet has to be, uh, we, we have to remain and see about that. Before I go to the commissioners, um, Ms. Menusus, could you read, uh, we received an email from Commissioner Eisner. I've, I just feel that, um, we need to read his email first and then we can go to, uh, because it's relevant to this discussion. Go ahead.
Sure. This is from Commissioner Eisner, submitted today at 5:27 PM. I do not agree with discussing or voting on such an important item as our audit of the permit department. My request is to table this until our January meeting. I have not been given any reason for the rush to discuss and decide without a fifth member, without a fifth board member. This action restricts the input from the entire commission. I was informed that we would not have any big decisions made while I was on vacation. I have also expressed in writing to the city manager my displeasure in the rushed agenda item. I was informed that Commissioner Kuliannis refused to wait until January. Thank you, Commissioner Mike Eisner.
Okay. Uh, before we go further, let me just ask the commissioners, is there any motion to table this item until next year from any commissioner? Okay. Thank you very much. That, that matter i- ends on that. Um, let me go to, uh, commissioner comments, Vice Mayor Lon.
Uh, yeah. So I have a, a couple of broad-facing comments here. Uh, one is, uh, for those who are inclined to think so, we are not trying to bury anything. The fact of the matter is what we're trying to do is remove portions of comments that should have been addressed in a different manner. Uh, those comments are going to be public at whatever time, um, given the proceedings that we need to go through, uh, with HR and, and, uh, our, our legal representation in this matter. Um, those will be made public as was previously stated, uh, with our HR reports. To the second matter, uh, that was raised by Commissioner Eisner, um, decisions take place whether you're on vacation or not. Um, there are decisions that are made when I was on vacation last year. There were deci, anytime you miss a meeting, there's going to be decisions made. There's, I don't see a reason to, uh, prevent decisions from being made simply because somebody is absent. Um, as far as the presently presented report from the auditor, um, I think it has been detailed enough to my satisfaction and I'm, I'm going to go to, to approve, to, uh, approve it and move on. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes, I'd like to get, uh, past this tonight, move forward and, uh, I, I don't think anything that Commissioner Eisner's going to say up here is going to be able to sway any precision, the, any, any decision or direction. I think this, uh, board's ready to move forward and that's what we need to do. And so, um, and it, and we talked about as soon as we went under the new policy, it would be presented back to us in a timely manner and that timely manner is now. And so it's here, it's in front of us and, uh, we need to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kuliannis, anything more?
Yeah, just one more. So this report was issued and read, uh, available to be read by everyone. This has been on, uh, posted, what, three times with one and two to the public? Um, I hear all these comments about, um, you know, shoving things under rugs and transparency and all this other, um, stuff, but this has been out there. Uh, he is going to, most likely what he told us he was doing is he's just going to cut and paste one and two into the memo that will then be put in the file. So what you're going to see in the file is the same thing that everyone had access to reading, um, over, what, how many weeks and months? So, um, but you're.
So, um, but you're not gonna satisfy, uh, everyone and you're not gonna satisfy conspiracy theories and all the things that go on. You know, I, I'm, I'm gonna take this opportunity, just give me a little latitude here, you know, and, um, every community has people that come up to the podium and profess, um, theories. It's actually healthy. Uh, you know, you and I had this philosophical conversation one time. I think it's healthy for people to come up and voice their opinions. It really is. I mean, my, my colleague used to do it and, uh, and I've done it and I think it is healthy. But our job over here on this side of the dais is to be a little more sober. And we have to make decisions and we have lawyers and we have laws. And we don't wanna get mired up, um, in unnecessary litigation by not following the advice of our lawyers and the policies that need to be adhered to. And this was clearly a situation where both of our attorneys told us this is the way to handle this situation and we are handling it. Now, I have no control of, of what people think when they leave here and what they continue to think, but I think this has been as transparent as that, as it can be. The allegations are again posted. They'll be public record. Mr. Pullos has made his, his, whatever his, uh, allegations are. The former employee is gonna have his due process that he's entitled to, to answer those, and have that put into his record as well. So I think it's a transparent and very fair process, that hopefully will end this and hopefully satisfy that, uh, any potential litigation because I don't wanna spend any more money. No offense, Mr. Salzman, I don't wanna spend any more money on lawyers if we don't have to. I know sometimes we have to, but, um, but sometimes we can avoid it by just following advice. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I just have a couple of comments, so I'll be real brief. One, um, when we had the election in, I guess, twenty twenty-two, up until that point, there were a lot of recommendations, uh, things that, uh, residents wanted to see us do differently in terms of public input, comments, that sort of thing, uh, Zoom comments, everything, and we did that. And, um, and, and so, um, that, that, we did that, so we were responsive to them. The one thing that we didn't do in, in kind of this, and I do appreciate Mr. Pullos and what he did, is he brought to the forefront, our personnel rules haven't been looked at in a long time. And so, um, and quite frankly, I've even got some doubt that they, they mesh well with our charter, which the attorneys are gonna look at. But as I had a conversation with Mr. Pullos a while back, that, you know, if the policy that was instituted last week was in place when it should have been, we wouldn't have had this issue tonight. So I, I really don't see any, any issue with Mr. Pullos at all. In fact, I, I think what he did was helpful to bring this up, uh, bring this matter to forefront. So now we have a policy and, and quite frankly, again, if this policy had been in place when Mr. Pullos had been hired, he would know what he had to do with the audit. It may be different than other places, but basically it would have been fine tuned to what Tarpon Springs' expectations are. Also, um, I did a report myself that was in last week and the purpose of that was to, um, use that as a, a, a way of bringing some additional recommendations of policy changes together. And Ms. Kardashian and Ms. Jackson are gonna be, um, looking at those and bringing those back to us as well. Measures for giving the city manager, not necessarily Mr. Lacouris, whoever's there, and also the commission who's ever here, um, a way of doing business to provide some latitude of doing things, um, temporarily in case, if there's a, a problem. So that's the point of that and some other things associated with that. It, it, to me, the overall thing was just unfortunate, um, but I'm glad it happened. Honestly, I really, really am glad, uh, that it happened because it just kinda shows you how much work we really have to do in policies in order to get this, uh, city government, um, up into the twenty-first century. The, um, the only other, um, uh, comment that I have is, um, with regard to this, what, our, our motion is gonna be to approve the, um, audit, uh, report, the building department audit as it was presented this evening, is that correct, in the backup? Okay. And let's see, there'll be further discussions of this sort of, um, uh, you know, the, the, this kind of in a, a matter in a, a very implied way when we get into these policy things and perhaps some other things next year or so. But in any case, at least this particular issue, um, with the audit, will be, uh, put to rest and we'll get into a, a fresh year in January. Is, is there any other commission comments on this? If not, may I have a motion and please state your motion? To just approve, Commissioner Kuliannis, go ahead.
I make, I make a motion that we approve the audit report as presented, uh, on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, uh, for the audit and of the building development, um, department by Mr. Pullos.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Salzman?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Um, if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Vice Maryland?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus.
Yes. Okay, that ends the agenda for this evening. And, um, let me go to, uh, staff and board comments. Uh, Sergeant Crawford, anything from the police department?
Just like, uh, wish everyone a happy holidays and remind the citizens to lock your car doors, please. Saves us a lot of work.
And, and thank you for sitting in for Chief Young.
My pleasure.
City Attorney Salzman.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, I am requesting that we have a, uh, shade meeting on the TRAS case to update you where we are. Um, and, uh, I have, uh, hopefully that the board can meet on Monday, uh, the eighteenth at ten AM is the time we're looking at. Um, so I can, it, it will not be very long, but, um, I just need to update you and tell you where we're going.
Do, do we have to set the time, uh, the amount of time for the meeting this evening?
Uh, we would set it at one hour.
One hour?
Yes.
And do we have to name who's gonna?
Okay, an hour and a half.
Can, can we, uh, do we have?
As if we can, if we can list, uh, the, uh, commissioners that will be there, which is everyone who's here tonight.
Okay, let me go through that.
Okay.
It would be Commissioner Kuliannis, myself, uh, Mayor Vaticus, Commissioner Lunt and Commissioner Kuliass. The city manager will be in attendance.
And I will be there.
And City Attorney Salzman will be on attendance and, um, and that's, is that it?
That, that is it.
Is there, uh, we need to have approval of this?
Yes.
Or you're just making, can I have a motion to that effect in a second?
Motion to have a shade meeting on December eighteenth at ten AM, from ten AM to eleven thirty AM, which will include, um, those mentioned by the mayor.
Second. Second. Vice Maryland, you seconded it.
Seconded.
If there's no further comments, uh, roll call, please. Oh, hang on, public comments? Any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, any, uh, remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Vice Maryland?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus.
Yes, um, I should also add that, uh, that particular time and day was based on the availability that commissioners, um, in when they would be here. So it wasn't trying to choose it for any other reason.
Availability and the holidays.
And the holidays, that's right.
Yes.
Okay. And it will be upstairs in the conference room.
Second floor conference room, yes.
City Manager Lacouris.
Hope just like to wish everybody a happy holidays and, uh, we're already working on all the variety of things we've done this year, the tree lightings and stuff, and we've already got ideas to make it even bigger and better next year, so.
Good. Um, Ms. Manusus, thank you for being here this evening. Any comments?
Just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Maryland, anything?
It's, uh, been an interesting year. I'm glad to see it end on a positive note. Um, I wanna wish everybody, uh, happy holidays, stay safe out there, the best for you and your families, and, uh, I look forward to reconvening next year.
Commissioner Kuliass.
Just wanna say this was a very productive meeting. It was very peaceful and, uh, easygoing with all of us up here and, uh, um, I had a great time at the Christmas parade and there was just a lot of people there. It's just a good thing for our small town and so, uh, I really do appreciate it. Everybody's been able to put it together and, uh, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays. And, uh, just look forward to seeing you all next year. A lot of big things. We got a lot of work to do and, uh, it's pretty much our final years, this current board together and so we gotta work hard to make some good things happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuliannis.
Yeah, the, um, the parade, I, uh, Commissioner Kuliass needs to, uh, learn how to allocate his candy, uh, throwing. Uh, he ran out, what, about halfway up Tarpon Avenue? Because he's throwing it out by shovel loads, but we had a lot of fun. It was, it was a great time and, and, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-four to be productive and hopefully we can get, um, I mean, we're always gonna have ranker. I think it's part of the, the American way of doing government, but, um, you know, when I was on the planning and zoning board, uh, we oftentimes, and for example, Anquot Harbor, when I was the only no vote on Anquot Harbor, the, um, yet we walked out of those, even though we voted differently, we always walked out of those meetings, uh, congenial. And, um, that's something I hope we can, can do in twenty twenty-four here is that how we, what we vote on, um, is our own conscience and our motives should never be, um, uh, challenged. How we vote and why we vote the way we do is our, uh, hopefully is coming from our own conscience and what we believe is best for, for the community. But, uh, I think we shouldn't challenge each other's, um, uh, reasons. And, um, anyways, I wish everybody a happy holiday and, uh, I look forward to, uh, getting together next year and doing some things positive for our community. Thank you.
Okay, I, uh, wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Uh, this is our last meeting for the year. Our next meeting is January ninth. But that doesn't mean City Hall closes. And in preparation for the next year, I know City Manager Lacouris, he and I have discussed trying to get some dates for all these meetings we're talking about. And, um, team goes up, so we, we come back for that January, January ninth meeting. We'll have a list of things that we need to do early on and perhaps work out some dates ahead of time. Uh, so we will be working to that. I'm actually really, really looking forward to twenty twenty-four. I made a prediction, twenty twenty-three was not gonna be a good year. City Manager Lacouris keeps talking, uh, reminding me of that and I, my prediction for twenty twenty-four, really have some good vibes for it. Generally that comes true. Not, everything is perfect, but much better than twenty twenty-three. The other thing is the, um, in, in, if any indication, is the Christmas parade and also the Snow Place event. We're, you, we're stealing people from other cities, is that right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's, that ought to tell you something. We're getting complaints from other cities that we're stealing people from them, then they're coming here. And I wish to thank the police department and the fire department for everything that they've done to, to make that a very pleasurable event, also our recreation department. So, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Adjourned at eight fifty.